I'd like to call this meeting of finance and construction on the water and we'll begin at this time. And Mr. Simmons, who is the Chair of Construction, I'd ask him to lead us in invocation.
In the Father gracious Lord, we thank you. We come to you asking you to continue to bless us as we go through this journey that you have set forth. Lord, we ask you to continue to bless our family. We ask you to step in and govern this meeting as you will see fit. Ask this in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
Mr. Chair, if I may, before we start the meeting, let me ask Bobby, will you update the board, update both committees in terms of where we are with Townsend and the water situation in Maxton?
So, excuse me, good evening. As of approximately 3:30 this afternoon, the water in Maxton had been restored. Our plumbers were on site to walk the building and assess the water pressure within the building. Cafeteria is sufficient for them to operate, but there's not sufficient water pressure currently in our restrooms. So, we did have porta potties on site today along with potable water. We did provide water bottles for bottled water for students as well. So, we made a decision to leave those porta potties and potable water in place just in case there may be something overnight tonight. But we are prepared for breakfast and bag lunches tomorrow, just in the event that something else may happen with the water overnight. And Dr. Faulner will notify her parents of the situation later on this evening.
Okay, any questions?
And in terms of heat, there is a section of the building that operates on a boiler system. We do have portable heaters in those classrooms.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bobby. This time we'll move down to agenda, the first topic. And folks, most of this tonight is information. I think there might be one area that we would ask for approval with the committees that are here. And since this, I think, is the first time we've met this fall, we do do the construction and finance together because it's kind of hard to do one without the other. So, that's the reason all year these two committees will meet at the same time. So, Mr. Hugh, and you folks are going to have to work with me with this microphone. Is he already on? Okay.
Good evening. Just quick update on FEMA. Back on October 25th, we met with them. They're reworking the project worksheet 1901 to include contents, direct administrative costs, architect engineering costs that we had already spent prior back during Matthew. They're going to include that with the 24 million that they offered a few months ago. Then it's going to go into an insurance reduction. They reduce it down based on the insurance proceeds that we had already received. So, we may be looking around 22 million altogether on that. Now, I know back in March of 2020, the school board voted for the projects to be demo, new school, bus garage, central office. And far as the demo is concerned, FEMA is going to work with us and provide that at a separate cost and it will not come from that large pot of money, the roughly 22 million that we should receive. And it would be reimbursable back to us when we do the demo. We're waiting for their approvals on all that as well. The next step is, once FEMA determines that everything, they're fine with the money, they will have what's called a FEMA 15 person to come in, meet with us to let us know what our next steps are. They would like for a complete design or scope of work for the new bus garage that we're looking at doing. Unfortunately, we can't afford those architectural and engineering fees upfront. So, once they approve the money, they're going to go ahead and pull out a portion of that money to set aside so we can get started on that for the architect and engineering. Once we do that and we get the design work done on that, it'll have to go through what's called EHP, environmental historical preservation. That could take anywhere from a year to two years depending on how long or slow they operate on all that. The good news is when we bought the land on 7-Eleven, a lot of those environmental studies were done so we can provide those reports to them. And hopefully that will satisfy some of those needs. Then what our next step is, try to get ahead a little bit, maybe first of the year, is to go ahead and put it out for bid or do an RFQ for architect engineering and do one maybe for demo and already be ready and have that set in place. So, when the money does come available and they say you can start, then we can just move right into it instead of sitting there, then going out for bid on everything from there. And if any money is left over from the construction of the bus garage, which we did have provided a brief description of work for there. And so, basically told them roughly the size building we wanted, number of bays for the mechanics to work in, computer services, technology, power school testing, everything that's at the current bus garage, move it over, including paving, fuel pumps, fuel tanks. So, we did provide that to them so they have a rough idea of what they, we want to do there. And I did mention if any money is left over, as Dr. Williamson and several others have discussed, possible if paving of the central office parking lot as well as renovation to the old cafeteria building for storage slash office space.
Okay, any questions? Mr. Hugh, with those timelines, best case, worst case scenario, where will we be looking at as far as the actual construction starting? And I know that's a loaded question. Are we looking next 26 or 27? What would we be looking at? Just that, just to guess.
Just a guess. They, once we get approved for the money, they want us to start the project within 180 days. So, we could have the site work all done within that 180 days.
Okay.
And then after that, you can start with the construction through their approvals, like I said. But with, once you get that architect engineering part done, site plans, then the environment and historical preservation department with FEMA will have to review everything.
Right.
Then we're at their mercy.
That's where it could take some time.
That's where it could take some time. But the question is, when will they get to the point where they can go ahead and let us release some of the money to us?
Right.
That's the other question. With all the other hurricanes that just took place, they're pretty much tapped out right now.
Right. Any other? Mr. Henry?
Mr. Hugh, where are they at in discussion of demolition of the old central office? I know we're getting a lot of our community people questioning that project.
Right. So, far as demolition, I did get an estimate from DH Griffin and another company, but DH Griffin, it was around 1.4 million for both West Lomerton and the old central office site demolition. Now, that cost would be, will be more because there's a lot of unknowns as far as the asbestos and other environmental factors there for demolition. We're waiting on FEMA to provide that pot of money for demo. That's why we would like to come first of the year, working with Ms. Danielle Amon with Baker Donaldson Law Firm. They have her procurement attorney. That I feel best that if they put it out, not so much they put it out for bid, but write up the specs and the scope of work to be done. That way they can, they will follow FEMA's guidelines on what they want. So, we won't have no issues there. And then if we can go ahead and get that out for bid and let them know who are the winning contractor would be, that once this money is released, then here's what we need to do. If they'll work with us on that. So, once that money is released from FEMA, then, or okay by them, we'll have to spend it upfront and then they'll reimburse us back. But you're looking anywhere from a million and a half to $2 million.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, Mr. Hugh, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Erica, sense, sir, the 2425 operating budget?
Good evening, Chairman Lowry, Chairman Simmons, Dr. Williamson and board members. I place at your desk a copy of a budget summary along with the entire almost 60-page budget document. I do not plan on going line by line through that document. I'm sure nobody wants me to do that. So, I wanted to start with the overview on the budget summary, which shows the breakdown by funding source. It's the one pager that was on top of the budget. And to just show what percentage each of the types of funding sources represent as our total budget. So, our total budget this year is currently $348,74,898. The largest portion of that, almost 55%, being the state public school fund at $189 million. Current expense and special revenue, 7%, 24.3 million. Federal programs is almost 21%, 72, almost 73 million. And that amount will slowly reduce and get back to what is a quote "normal" amount of federal funding. That still includes our last Esser amounts and those will all be gone after this school year. Normal federal funds is somewhere close to around 50 million total. Capital outlay has also increased this year because we're including, we're in the construction phase for our new school. So, you'll see that number has largely increased as well. And capital represents 10.3% of our total budget. And enterprise funds, which would be our child nutrition department, our shining stars locations and our prime time program rounded out at 7.25, representing 25.2 million with the bulk of that being child nutrition funds, around 23 million of that, as you'll see in the detail in the budget, is child nutrition. I get asked a lot, the purpose of the funds and how that's broken down. So, included that on the summary as well. You'll see 62% of our total budget goes to support instructional services. 20% system-wide support services, almost 7% ancillary services like school food service, transportation department, so forth. Non-program charges is indirect cost. So, of the total dollar amount, less than 1% we get to bring back to local as indirect cost and then, of course, the capital outlay. I'm also asked to break it down further to the object level. In a normal year, we spend close to 80% of our total budget on salaries and benefits because we still have a large amount of those federal COVID dollars in the budget for HVAC and capital outlay. That's kind of taking away from the total budget amount and you'll see it's a little over 60% salary and benefits. And you'll see the breakdown there, contracted services, professional development, repairs, supplies and software, equipment, and again, the HVAC capital outlay maintenance charges. I also like to include the changes to our ADM. As you'll see over the last five years, for the first time last year, we actually had an increase in ADM. But for the 2425, we do see a decrease of 127 kids. For the first time, DPI is basing our allotments on the end of the year and not a projection. So, at the end of '23-'24 is where they got the number of 20,541 students. So, that is like, say, 127, a less than 1% reduction from the previous year. And that is the number that DPI uses in our funding formulas where an ADM is required to allot those funds. I wanted to go over what was included in the state budget and what is represented in this budget. We have implemented all of the raises, 3% for central office and classified staff. Teachers received an average raise anywhere from 1.55% to 7.05, and this is at the bottom of this page, depending on the step they're on. So, as it has been the last few years, the state seems to favor beginning teachers and kind of the middle of the pay step. So, they get a higher percentage raise than our, what we would call veteran teachers at steps, say, 15 and higher. Once our teachers get to step 15, they don't experience a raise again until step 25, a step increase. They would get whatever raise the state built in if it was a percentage, but they do not get, all of those steps are the same salary from step 15 until you get to 25. We had the first retirement match decrease that I've experienced in my 24 years here. It went, retirement match decreased from 25.02% to 24.04%. But hospitalization took up for that decrease. So, for every person, PSRC has to match. It went from 7,557 in matching funds to $8,095 in matching funds. So, any savings we would have seen in the retirement was certainly eaten up by that hospital increase. Any questions for me so far?
Dr. Emanuel?
This is not the right time to ask this specific one. You tell me, okay? In your budget summary with capital outlay, 2425, okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Now, tell me if I'm reading the numbers wrong. You have $34,211,000, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And I know a lot of that may include the new school.
That is, most of that is the new school.
If you look at the proposed projects for the 2425 school year, it looks like it's about $800,000, a little over. Now, my question is this, is that the absolute all that we can use for proposed projects?
I think we're going to get to that. Current capital projects updates a little further down the list.
Did I jump the gun?
Just a little bit, but it's okay. We're, it's, after I finish this, we've got one, two, three, it's fourth on the agenda and we'll come back to capital projects in more detail.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that we had some money, some other things we could get in that capital outlay.
If you want me to jump the gun and say, okay.
No, 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 this is not my committee, no ma'am. I just wanted to leave it open that we could add some more.
That's going to be a conversation, but I don't think it's going to go the way you want it to, but I'll save that for later.
I can still voice my opinion.
Absolutely, yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. And like I said, I don't plan on going through detail line by line on this budget. You just received the document. It is on the agenda for Friday at the retreat. So, I can kind of take questions, get a lead on specific information anybody wants to ask. And that will lead the conversation and the information I can bring in detail.
Dr. Emanuel, and reiterating what Ms. Erica said, there's some capital outlay stuff that, a lot of it's going to go in more detail Friday. And I asked, because I asked, and then I got up off the floor after I got my answer. So, Mr. Tur- oh, yes, yes, we will. Let me get Mr. Terry on here. Mr. Terry?
Hey, Ms. Erica.
Hey, Mrs. Erica, good. How are you, sir?
Is it possible, this is 58, it looks like 58 pages, front and back?
Yes, sir.
And it's in a, I guess it's out of Excel in a, uh-huh, in a page, like a page view or whatever. Is there any way to get this in an Excel document?
Absolutely. That's where I have it saved. It's in Excel, yes, sir.
Okay, can I, can it?
I can email it.
Without the headings?
Yes. So, you just want a list of all the account codes so you can sort it?
If you don't mind.
I can, yes, sir. I can do that.
Okay, any other questions? All right, Ms. Erica, Esser closeout?
I also included at your desk a COVID funding summary that I have shared before. And once we're done with COVID, I'll come back and do a what we received, what we spent. We've spent nearly all of the Esser money we've received. There were a few Esser allotments that we received that we weren't able to spend because we didn't either have the program or it's, and I will have that column once we're done with Esser. But again, I wanted to show over, once Governor Cooper closed schools in March of 2020, it turned into a multi-year closure. And over the course, since that year, in the last four years, we have received a total of $173 million in different phases of COVID funding. We first had the CARES Act that was approved very early in March by the federal government. We received a total of $22.1 million there and I included all the individual PRCs. Most of that was geared directly to switching to students being at home, getting that online instruction. We had to pivot very quickly to getting students what they needed to stay engaged. And it evolved towards the end of being, getting cleaning supplies, sanitation, equipment, those type things to try to get everybody back in school. All of those funds have been spent, including all of the Esser 1. There was a large pot in each of those acts. Esser 1 was there. The CRSAA was approved in December of 2020. Again, that focus was getting kids back in school, trying to close that gap that existed between kids being in a physical location to learning online. And Esser 171 was that Esser 2 pot. It was a large total there. All of those funds have been spent. ARP was approved the latest round and that was approved in March of 2021. And Esser 3181 was the largest amount there, slightly over $100 million. Again, that makes up all those totals and I'll add that column once we're done with Esser. All of those have been closed out with the exception of 181. We have applied for an extension for a couple of projects there, one being HVAC, one being windows, and the two buildings that are going up at St. Paul's and Purnell Swit. We have asked, there is an opportunity for an extension that would allow us an additional 18 months beyond January, which would end in March of 2026. That was just submitted Wednesday before Thanksgiving and we're waiting to hear approval on that. But I just wanted to give that update on those Esser funds and how that would change the landscape of the budget.
Okay, we have any questions? Ms. Erica, thank you and
Thank you.
One thing we say, folks, with all these sheets here, if you had time, go see Ms. Erica at her office. She'd be glad to go through any part of this year and that explanation is usually a lot better than what we can get here with the big group. So, please take advantage of that if there's any questions.
Thank you.
Uh-huh. Mr. Bobby, Career Center Phase 2 update?
So, good evening, Chairmen Lowry and Chairman Simmons. I place at your desk, and it should have a Metcon symbol in the top left-hand corner. So, when we originally started planning for our, for the new Career Technical Education Center and Planetarium Science Center, we realized we were limited to funds to about $72 million, if I'm right, Ms. Erica, when this first started, through Needs-Based Grant, SKEFI Grant, our portion and the county's portion. So, when we got down to the bid phase, we knew that our best option was not to bid the project as one total project, but to separate it into what we're going to call Phase 1 and Phase 2. Metcon and SFLNA separated those projects into Project A, B, and C, and then Area D. So, Phase 1 came in slightly under the $72 million. So, then the conversation began on what do we do with Phase 2. So, to update everybody, Phase 2 includes four business labs, culinary center, and also two Megatronics labs. So, we had, we did have bids for those and those bids were opened back last year. So, we did have additional conversation about Area Phase 2. So, Metcon reached out to all of the subcontractors that are currently on site and asked them to submit a bid for Phase 2. Again, nothing has been taken out of Phase 2. So, what you're going to see at this dollar amount here is everything that was in the original plan is still in this proposed dollar amount. So, contractors are willing to hold these bids for 30 days before they would increase these or say, no, I'm not interested in completing Phase 2. So, for us to complete Phase 2 is going to be a dollar amount of approximately $15.2 million. And this would include all equipment. This is exactly as we had originally designed. And I think Ms. Erica's behind me too, unless you have questions on these dollar amount, on the sheet here from Metcon.
Mr. Bobby, we can, between you and Ms. Erica, we can put, we're going to put together how 15, 15.2 million would come about, okay?
So, in conversations with Ms. Blue and with the county and Metcon and everybody involved in the project, you know, the idea was to finish the project as it was originally designed, thank you, by our architect and engineer. So, the county has committed half of the 15.1 and they can talk with Metcon and everybody involved in the project to have those funds available as needed. Right now, we're still early on in the project. We've only requested eight and a half million. We are requesting an additional 15 million. So, we're nowhere near spending the 72.6 that's already being allocated for this project. The county has discussed with us the option to finance. They are going to be building a new health department. They have indicated that they will include this as part of their finance agreement with them paying half, public schools of Robinson County being on hook for half. We discussed, once we get the details of that finance option, our repayment plan would be around half a million dollars from capital projects each year, obviously meaning we would have multi-years, we would have to pay that back. And Ms. Blue has agreed, along with the county, to those terms. More details will come out. She said in February or March, they would complete their prior year audit and that audit completion is necessary for LGC to allow them to go out for any type of financing, which would include this and the health department.
Okay, that's a lot. So, do we have questions or comments? Because there's some, probably going to be some questions here. Mr. Britt, hold on just a minute.
And Mr. Bobby, update us as well with the, once we've been in the building 18 months, we get 3 million?
Yes, so there are components in the building and one of those is the installation of our geothermal. So, in the regional bid, we had to spend an extra few thousand dollars in order to be able to be, in order to be eligible for rebate from the company, from the federal government. But again, it's approximately $3 million, but those funds would not be available until 18 months after the completion of the project. until eighteen months after the completion of the project.
Yeah. Uh, Dr. Manuel?
To enter in such a contract, payment contract, would not the board have to approve that?
Yes, we, we have it on the agenda for Monday night, I mean, for next Tuesday.
Any others?
We wanted to talk about it in detail tonight, um, but yes, as Dr. Williamson indicated, we are asking for that approval on Tuesday.
Ms. Fields?
So on Friday, will we talk a little bit more how this debt will affect our current budget?
Yes, we're actually going to talk about that when we get to current capital projects tonight.
Okay.
And we can revisit if we need to Friday, yes ma'am.
Anyone else? Okay, uh, anybody have a comment? Okay, let me just add that, uh, and if I go back, folks, we've got these need-based grants, up to seventy-two million and the other grants, Ms. Erica and Mr. Bobby mentioned. We were hoping to get the other fifteen million to finish. That's what we're talking about with the seven and a half from the county and us providing seven and a half. That's where it's coming from. And the whole idea behind this, I mean, this is just my two cents. If we don't finish the building now, when will it be finished? And you push it down the road for ten years, everything's going to cost more. And we talked about building it like this with these labs. So, you know, I just think it needs to be, we need to go through and do what we need to do. But more information will be provided. Now, do you need approval on that to go to the board Tuesday night at this time?
Yes.
Okay, well, where she was talking about us doing the seven and a half million, and she gave the information about paying back half a million a year until that was paid off, we would need a motion at this time to bring that in front of the board next Tuesday night. And it could be from anybody on construction or finance.
And Ms. Chair, if I may, Erica, let's clarify that that payback, the half million, would be out of our current fund source, help me, lottery fund source, which could be used for capital.
Correct, so we get around a one and a half million dollars directly from lottery proceeds every year, and that funding can be used for debt service. So we would use a portion of that one and a half million. But that does mean we would not have availability of that half million that we have built into our budget in previous years for other projects.
Ms. Fields?
So the, the rebate, would we add that as a lump sum payment once we receive that back to offset the half million a year?
That's going to be an option, yes. We will have more details on that once we get to the final, um, construction, um, get that timeline, and, um, that could be an option.
And Mr. Craig, if I may, to add also, at the last board meeting, we approved going with an alternate vendor for our equipment, and so we were able to save approximately two, two point five million dollars from the original quote. And, but now that money's in Phase One, but again, all of that money would be available for us to use in Phase One and Two.
Okay, any other comments? Do we have a motion? Mr. Brewer?
I'll make a motion that we, um, agree to the funding on, on Phase One.
Phase Two?
Phase Two.
Phase Two.
Okay, we have a motion to, uh, approve the funding for Phase Two. Do we have a second? Second, Mr. Phillips, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Okay, um, capital outlay projects, Mr. Bobby?
Yes, so, uh, a few years back, there was always confusion about what capital outlay projects were approved and how far along we were on those projects. So I started keeping a running list of what was approved by both committees and would kind of give periodic updates on where we're at on those. So anything you see highlighted in yellow is an update from the last time, um, this form was passed out. So we have completed our loan grants parking, I E A parking in the Purnell Swet tennis courts. I also include what we estimated those costs would be along with what the actual dollar amount we spent. So on the backside of that, on the backside of the document too, talk about the projects that were approved for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. So, uh, we have completed the bleacher installation at Lomerton Junior. Based upon the dollar amount that came in for the bleachers, and once we got in and looked at the condition of the floor, we felt it was best to go ahead and, uh, redo the floor while we were there at one time because there was no good putting the bleachers in and the condition the floor was in. So, um, that total project, although estimated at three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, we actually spent about four thirty-five, but that included, and I've got a note here, bleachers flooring and, um, painting. So that entire gym has been redone there. We completed the parking lot at St. Paul's Middle. Again, estimated cost of about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars when we got there. No one was aware there was a main water line running underneath the parking lot. So, uh, that part, that water line was, uh, in need of repair, so we had to replace it. And once we began to tear up the parking lot, we realized there was no stone underneath it. So the increased amount come from, uh, replacing the main water line that ran to the back building and also additional stones. So locker room renovations, we did not have an estimate on doing the, the girls' locker rooms at Lomerton Senior High. But as we discussed in our capital meeting last year, that it was cheaper to go ahead and do this work than have a Title IX, uh, case against us. So again, I've included what took place in that work there, the cost of about forty thousand dollars, which was a heat pump installation, lockers, dryer, washer dryer installation, and some minor roof repairs. Uh, the only project that has not been completed that was approved for this current school year is the sewer replacement project out at Littlefield. As most of you are aware, the sewer system there, the sewer system for the older part of the building has failed, and we do pump and haul in there sometimes as much as twice a week. So we are in the plan and design phase of tying in a new sewer system that will handle the entire school. Contractors have been on site this week looking at possible, um, drain lines and where they can run those in the property we have behind the school. So we do not have a current cost on that. But again, we are spending money weekly doing a pump and haul there and have been for years. But this is an update on where we're at on all of our current capital projects.
Uh, Mr. Henry?
Mr. Bobby, we still pumping and hauling also at Piney Grove?
Yes, there are several schools that we're pumping and hauling at. Littlefield is just the one that is in the most need of repair.
Any other questions? Okay, Dr. Manuel?
I think that those pumping and hauling situations are unsanitary and pathetic, that we need to fix that. I mean, I, I just can't see that we in this time in, in, in history, we're pumping and hauling. I, I don't know why that's not a priority. I, I can't understand that. I know that I have some priorities I'd like to mention, but that to me should be a priority for everyone.
Mr. Bobby, I'll just, it's like, uh, make a comment. Could we maybe by Friday, just to give us an idea of how many schools we actually are doing that at?
Okay.
The total number and what the cost is, if that's possible by Friday?
Yes.
Thank you.
So my name's not on the agenda for this, but with the questions about the capital projects and the conversations we had, um, there, um, we've got several meetings this weekend. At the retreat, we're going to talk about, um, a C T E review, or give me the word, what's the word? I'm looking for it. C T E review of our high schools where we had, um, a team come in and do an assessment for ADA compliance at our high schools. Um, so that has become the priority for the district moving forward for capital projects. Uh, most, and then we're going to go in detail on that on Friday. We didn't present that here tonight because of the different things involved in it, but it is on the agenda in detail on Friday. But that does have a monetary component to it that we are not getting funding for. We've got to use our current capital to, um, address all of those concerns that have come up. So they look at, um, our buildings compared to the code for the year the building was built and designed, and how it relates to students with disabilities and their ability to function as a, a child in the classroom without a disability.
Did, may I respond? Usually they give you a timeline, did they give you a time?
Yes, ma'am. Well, we thought that initially, um, initially, we thought we were going to have up to a ten-year period. So we started developing our return plan on ten years, and the feedback we received from the team was no, we had to move that timeline up. So they, most of it, they are requiring us to complete by December of twenty twenty-five. The detailed information we're going to give you will show everything involved there and when it has to be completed. There are some things that go to twenty twenty-seven, um, but most everything, and some of it's small. I mean, it ranges from zero to ten as to what the issue is. There are, um, parking lots we've got to, um, address, student parking. If you have X number of spaces, X number of those spaces have to be, um, handicap parking spaces. We have to make some changes there. Things like signage for notifying everyone where the nearest ADA compliant restroom is. We have to get those signs in place. Things like in the classroom where storage spaces are, um, a shelf might not be low enough for a child in a wheelchair to assist, so we've got to make changes there. Or a table might be too low for a wheelchair to, to, um, be able to be placed under. There is a detailed list we're going to give you that shows all of these issues, um, and the timelines, but it will require capital outlay to move forward to fix.
Hit your button, Dr. Man, hit your button.
Is there a cost estimate and you haven't had time to do it?
We haven't had time to do that yet.
And I'm not saying it's the same now, and you're right, they usually give you a timeline, and a lot, some of it schools can fix.
Yes, ma'am. And that's what we're going to, you know, have that plan in place. Can our maintenance department do some of the work? How much will we have to contract out? We're in that assessment part at this stage, Dr. Man.
All right, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. The biggest expense that we've seen so far would be bathroom changes. And bleachers.
Bleachers. And again, one of the big problems of this is they put a stipulation on it December of, uh, twenty-five. And that's, uh, that's the reason this capital outlay for next year could come under play as far as what we can and cannot do. Mr. Terry, do you have your hand up? Give me just a second. Okay, Ms. Terry?
I just have a quick conversation, a, a quick question in general about, uh, maintenance. While we're, oh, this conversation, um, and we have Mr. Bobby, who's so knowledgeable at the podium. I was wondering, is there, I'm sure that we have, uh, some system that we use for work orders, um, when somebody calls and says such and such has tore up at this school and we need some repair. So we have a, a system that we, we use for that. Is it possible for us to, uh, access some kind of reports, um, on, on those, um, on those work orders? Because e- either I keep hearing that I called, um, or I've as, been waiting on such and such for X amount of time, and I know there's reasons, but is it possible to have some reporting on that? So it, it, it would be interesting for, for me to see, um, you know, what typically takes the longest, or what can we get done in a hurry, and what are some of those reasons? And, and the reason I'm asking this is because maybe there's something that we can do, to sort of streamline, uh, some, some of these things.
Right, so in terms of, there is a reporting that I could extract when a work order is put in and when it's completed. But in terms of what determines that process, our maintenance department goes, goes through those and determines what will shut a school down versus what's something that they can bypass.
Right.
Uh, a second factor to that, of course, is staffing. As staff moves in and out, as for example, this week, Ms. Tony is down three HVAC guys. Either through sickness and or, they've decided to take time off. So again, there are a lot of factors that determine once the school puts something in, as to when an individual gets to it.
I understand that, I understand. So I was just, just in general, and I don't have anything in specific. I, I'm just, um, as, um, you know, at this level, I think that we should see some sort of, um, uh, reports on these, uh, district-wide, um, type initiatives that affects everyone. And I'm not trying to say that something's not getting done, I have no idea. I was just, uh, wondering in the, you know, for the, for the future. Thank you, Mr. Bobby.
Anything else, uh, Ms. Moreau, just a moment. Okay, Ms. Crystal?
Um, on the back of the over project, the top part, the St. Paul's High School, the modular units, are they the ones that are already there, or the, that's just what you just need to finish there? Or is that more?
I'm sorry, so the St. Paul modular units have been completed.
Okay, that's, so that's the area?
Yes, so that is the twelve class, eight, eight, eight classroom unit that sits kind of behind the gym.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
Okay, so that one's.
We just kept it on there because it was a completed project, and we didn't want to remove the details since it was previously there, but all of that work is done.
Okay, I thought maybe we were getting more, I was a little worried.
Anyone else? Okay, uh, Mr. Bobby, uh, Red Springs High School track?
Yes, so good evening again. So we have, uh, just to give you an update on where we're at with the St. Paul, with the Red Springs High School track, uh, L L and J did, uh, did submit substantial completion to us and the general contractor. Track repairs were made over the summer. We did receive a five-year warranty on the track surface. So, uh, that particular project, although it's not listed on the capital outlay, uh, capital outlay projects has been completed. And they have used the track since those repair work, since the repairs were made over the summer at, at no issues to my knowledge.
Any questions? Okay, uh, anything anyone has, Ms. Erica?
I apologize if I'm out of order. I also included a sheet, and I didn't talk about it at your desk. I was asked to kind of show, like, using the teacher pay scale, and that's what I've used as an example, um, what a salary is, and then what the matching would look like for that individual position to show how much more the district has to pay once we employ a person. And that's all that sheet shows, like, for example, a first-year teacher, while their salary's forty-one thousand, it will cost P S R C sixty-five thousand by the time we factor in the supplement and all the matching benefits. And I just wanted to, uh, explain that document. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay, folks, let me, uh, first, uh, thank everybody for being here. And, uh, it's been said before, I think it's important to come to committee meetings. You get information here, and then it kind of speeds up when we actually had a meeting next week. So thank you for being here tonight. Now, we have our retreat this Friday, and it's from, uh, twelve to five. We talked about doing something earlier in the afternoon. And there will be more detail on the, um, C T E requirements and some other things dealing with budget and, uh, details on, I got, looking here, a civil rights review, uh, some school board governance. So, uh, that retreat will be important to be here for that also Friday. Any questions? Dr. Williams?
And then, Mr. Chair, just as a reminder, our regular board meeting will start at five o'clock rather than six. Please state no.
Any comments? Do we have a motion to adjourn? A motion by Mr. Britt, uh, seconded by Mr. Brewer, all those in favor? Aye, thank you, and have a good evening.